I call to order the Town of Old Tabor zoning commission regular meeting and hybrid meeting of Monday, November 7th, 2022 at 7:00 PM in that town hall, second floor conference room at 302 Main Street, Old Tabor. Seated tonight, that's me, Bob Friedman, Chair, Mark Calderon, Vice Chair, regular commission members Mark Delmonico and Anne Marie Thorson. And seated for jury Lewis this evening is Sandy DiSenzo. Absent Justin Teravili and John Henry.
And John.
And also here tonight at our table is our clerk, Joanne Gally, and our building enforcement officer, and two people in the room for applications and this evening and online we have.
Two.
Two. Regular business minutes of the meeting of Monday, October 17th. Are there any additions or corrections? No? One would work, one word change, please to consider on the backside of the front page, paragraph five, six lines down, and in the sentence beginning on the fifth line, it says, "The state changed the statute to add adult-use retail sales." Medical retail by default, it says became adult-use retail, how about changing the word became to medical retail also, well, let's say, let's say, by default, it became also allowed or resulted in, you know, you know what I mean? It's a, medical retail did not become adult-use retail. Medical retail established that adult-use retail would be allowed. You know what I mean?
Medical retail was established prior to adult.
Medical retail by default established adult-use retail. Okay? Change the word became to established. Anything else? I will make a motion then to approve minutes of zoning commission meeting of Monday, October 17th as ended. Their second, Mark Delmonico, second motion, any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve minutes of Monday, October 17th, 2022, signified by staying high?
High.
High. Motion carries 500 unanimous. Thanks. Next on the agenda is correspondence. Have we any correspondence other than?
All related to applications.
Okay. Correspondence that we just got by email late today, doesn't count as correspondence? Fine federal is approved.
I figured I'd do it in your staff report. So yes, we've been appealed on fine.
We've been appealed on the non-approval of fine federal. Public hearings. Item A, Curry Queen, application for special exception use for 33-seat indoor restaurant at 12 outdoor seats and 315 square feet of retail area below two existing residential apartments. 93 Elm Street, assessment map 36 lot 91, in the shopping center business B2 district and pedestrian node. Applicant NS Enterprises LLC contract purchaser, agent, attorney, Edward Fajella, Mr. Consulting.
Hi, good evening. I'm Justin Fajella here representing NS Enterprises LLC, entity owned by Nalini Sreenivasan, who is under contracts of purchase 93 Elm Street, which is located on the north side of Elm Street, next to Stop and Shop, close to the easterly entrance to the, to the old Saber Shopping Center. It's property owned by A&amp;M Enterprises, which is owned by Mick Jaeger, formerly Jaeger Gas, on the property just in Orange. Joe Ren is on the call as well, so if you can add him to a panel, he's going to share his screen for part of the presentation. I'll give a brief overview and then Joe can review the site plan with you. First, the existing, she's looking to convert basically the existing building. There aren't any, there aren't going to be any addition or modification to the existing building. Currently, there's two parts, there's two apartments in the front side closest to Elm Street. Those are proposed remain, one one-bedroom apartment, one two-bedroom apartment. And then the remainder of the building, she's hoping to convert into a Indian-style restaurant, Curry Queen, and then have a small retail area with a separate entrance where she can serve prepared foods out of the retail area. There's an existing garage on the property, which will be used for one parking space and also for some storage for the restaurant and proposed outdoor seating. 32-seat restaurant with 12 up to 12 outdoor seats. The parking area is going to remain basically the same, the blacktop. Joe has provided his site plan showing how the parking will be better articulated. Additional landscaping has been added around the perimeter of the parking area. The, I'll let Joe go through, I just want to raise a few, a few more points. We appeared before Architectural Review Board and appeared before the Planning Commission over the past few weeks. The Architectural Review Board, based upon a discussion we had, and we agreed with all these conditions, gave a positive referral. One of the questions they had was confirming that there's no accessibility concerns between the existing parking area and the doors. Everything is flat. There's like a little concrete lift, but it can all be, it can all be graded. It's very minute. We have, we have photos. So everything's at grade from an accessibility standpoint, the restaurant. They asked for additional landscaping in the front on the Elm Street side. So the updated site plan has a new berm, landscaping berm, additional landscaping around the sign, and then the parking lot island. The building be power washed, that's fine. The posts on the freestanding sign, the painted black, problem, the sign will be on a timer, it goes off when, all these things are fine. Two, the upward, the parking requirement is three parking spaces for the two residential units, one of which is in the garage. So that's easy to mark. The other two residential parking spots will be marked with a small sign. So we agree to that. The island will have additional shrubs. Joe can tell you where that has been put in the plan. And the umbrellas need to be uniform in color. Again, no advertising, that's not a problem. So we would agree, for example, for a condition that there, terms of the Architectural Review Board, then that'd be. And then secondarily, Joe appeared at the Planning Commission meeting last week, and the big discussion at planning was sidewalk, and the applicant is to be able to install a sidewalk on the property. Chris and Carl, I spoke with them, there is a plan to extend sidewalks on the north side of Elm Street, this side, down, we old Tabor Shopping Center, you know, past where Home Goods and Footwear are, all the way through the entrance that to the east of this site. And so then we will continue it by putting sidewalk across our site. And as you know, some of the recent approvals on Lynn Street for Hanford Commons, there will be sidewalk connections on the south side of Elm Street as well. So it's going to be a much better increased pedestrian-friendly area. So we will comply with adding a sidewalk to the plan. So that's, that's a general overview of the application. We can best jump now, go through the site plan in a little bit more detail. And if you have questions, either of us can answer. We also have architectural plans and sign plans as well. Really without any comments, except for the nine points. Joe?
Yes, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hope everyone as well. For the record, Joe Ren, PE, representing the applicant. Ed gave you a pretty good overview. I have the plan up on the screen. You can see that as well, right?
Yes.
Okay. So the existing building is here outlined with the gray, partial gray shade. The attached garage is this portion here. There is an existing shed at this location on the property close to this property line that will be removed. The building, as Ed said, will stay in its current configuration, no vertical expansion, no outward expansion. There is a small outdoor dining patio here just to square off this corner. It's currently, all this area is currently grassed. So that will be a small dining area for up to 12 seats, as Ed had mentioned. The parking area is already there. All the pavement is already there, except we just added this little turnaround area for the last parking space and maybe for the garage too. When that person backs out of the garage or the space, they have a little extra turnaround room there so they can pull out forward. The parking lot currently is not striped. So obviously you can see here, we have it all organized and striped. There is no dedicated handicap accessible space. So we've added that. At this location, we have an aisle and a van accessible space with the proper sign and the detail for that. As Ed said, there's no stairs to get into the public spaces of this building. It was a retail, it's a rather recent addition. Most of this portion here is a rather recent addition to the, to the site. This was a, this is an older home here. It used to have an attached garage to it. And then at one point, the wall where the slab is versus the basement, that garage was turned into office and showroom space for Jaeger Gas. And this was all a retail showroom, again with the attached garage. So in a nutshell, the footprint stays the same. The use changes from retail to mostly restaurant. Small retail space in this location. I'll show you the floor plan in a moment. 315 square feet of retail space to be exact. So a couple parking spaces dedicated to that as well. On this side, we have 10, I believe it's 10 parking spaces on this side, one in the garage. And then we have one, two, three, four parallel spaces here in front. The pavement you can see goes all the way to this white shaded concrete area that's, has a roof overhang over that. And just to divide the two, since it's all asphalt, we've added 10 three-foot diameter planters in this location to add some greenery in front of the building. With a striped aisle, obviously between spaces, between planters for the main access to the restaurant, which is here. The access to the retail area, and we also accessed along that covered walkway, extends the entire length. And the door to that retail area is here. So that could either be accessed, obviously from the parking lot through the planters, or along the crosswalk and up and down this covered walkway along the front of the building to access that point. The landscaping other than those planters, as Ed had mentioned, we have added 18 arborvitae's here delineating the, the existing parking area. The parking is existing. So the distance to the property line is existing. We're maintaining that and not expanding that. But within that two to four or five foot area, we're planting those arborvitae's around the corner or screen. This area back here is, as you're familiar with this, there's a tree here, a couple of trees here, but there, it's kind of open to the parking lot and the main access to the shopping center and so forth. So we just put these around the parking area. We've added landscaping to this existing island, which is, we squared off here, this island is 160 square feet. If we count the whole entire green area, it's, it's well over that. But even if we just squared off, it's more than 100 square feet required. There is an ornamental Japanese maple tree in that island now. That's healthy and that's going to stay. ARB wanted us to add a few dwarf grasses around that to supplement, which we have on this revised plan. In the front of the building on the Elm Street side, we do have two added street trees. We have a number of trees here along this side and in the front. And then a number of trees also on the opposite side in here, shows as a tree line because there are several trees mixed in there. But we've added the two street trees. ARB wanted us to add a small landscape area around the existing sign, which is right here. And that existing sign is proposed to be reused. And obviously, just the signboards changed out. And then also, they asked us to add this landscape area here between the building and the street, which we did. And we added some shrubbing grasses in there. And we also encompassed that street tree within that island as well. The sidewalk that Ed mentioned from Planning Commission, most likely the best place within the right of way would be adjusting this guy wire so you could walk under it and matching up with the sidewalk that is supposed to be coming from this side, from the entrance, somewhere in this vicinity, under the guy wire, and then across the driveway to the extension of the property line over here. It's about 108, 108 feet of frontage. So it might be 110 feet or so of sidewalk from there to there. We, on this plan, we provided obviously all this zoning data. There's no variances required. Everything's either existing or more conforming. We also added this landscape table here and similar there. You could see everything is either conforming or better than the existing condition. Some of the trees and shrubs that were provided here, we have little leaf linden or honey locust for the two street trees. The throughout green giants are provides, the ones that the deer don't like. The dwarf grass, dwarf fountain grass, and then a couple of hydrangeas in the front as well for the mix of the landscaping. This is, I don't think Ed mentioned, but this is the B2 shopping center district. So it's a proposed restaurant use, which obviously is a special exception use. So referrals went to ARB and planning and told you the results of that. And I just went through, based on their comments, how we revised this plan, update that. In addition, we have a brand new septic system going in here because of the restaurant use. There already is an existing system for the residential apartments that was installed in the last 10 years. And that's separate. This new system in the parking lot here is all for the new retail and restaurant space. And that, that all has been reviewed and approved by CRAD. You should have a copy of that approval, but that's all in place as we speak. And I think there's no exterior lighting, site lighting, because we're under 20 parking spaces. I believe Ed and/or the sign and architect have provided some information on building, building mounted lighting and sign lighting, correct Ed?
Yeah, the sign lighting.
Yep. The sign out front is freestanding sign. That one is internally lit, I believe. So just the, just the boards will be replaced to the Curry Queen. And then any building signage or building lighting, lighting, all those specs were provided in the package as well. I do have.
The building signs are internally lit as well.
The building signs are also internally open. So those, those specs are part of the package. I have the architectural plans here. Basically, it's a drawing of the existing building with the house where the apartments are. This here is the retail space with that separate entrance here. Above is just a kind of an open vacant room that, that was used for training. And there is no plan for that space other than storage. And then from here down, this will be the kitchen area behind here. And then from this double door all the way down to the garage is the seating area and common restaurant area. And then we have the attached garage that Ed said will be used for one parking space plus storage. Overall floor plan like this here. And as I explained, here's the 315 square feet of retail space with some prep area behind. We have a kitchen area and then the restaurant area with two public restrooms, the outdoor dining area with 12 seats, and the attached garage. So with that, if you have any questions, we can try and entertain.
One question. How did you determine that the parking associated with the residential units would be one space for each?
It's one space for the one-bedroom and two, 1.5 spaces for the, for the two-bedroom, which equals three spaces.
And which regulation is that?
That is the, well, it's a combination. It's your existing regulations. It's also the new public act that came that says for a one-bedroom, you can't require more than one parking space.
But in section 62, access circulation, parking and loading, in 62.4.4, Part C, mixed use, and that's what this would be with residential and retail and restaurant. In buildings on, or in buildings or on lots containing a mix of uses, spaces for residential use will be specifically designated. So one question is, you've designated one as being in the garage.
Correct.
Based on your calculations, which of the other spaces would be designated for residential?
Joe, what, what spaces for, point out those spaces for resident, for the other two spaces? Part of the ARB requirement, if you remember, was to have a sign that says residential parking on the small side.
Right. Which, one of those, well, hold on. That's, that's one, that's part one of the question. Then the employee parking designated spaces on the plan to accommodate your statement of use of six employees.
Maximal.
You don't have to count extra spaces, but you should designate on the plan where the employees are anticipated to be directly to park. Then under 62.4.5, residential uses, it does not specify that this is for a residential district, but under 62.4.5, Part A, one or two dwelling unit. And this property is proposed here having two dwelling units. It says two spaces for each dwelling unit. Driveways or garages may be included as required space. So if that's two spaces for each unit, that would be four spaces, one in the garage and three in the parking lot area for the residential use, which is equivalent in terms of its applicability for parking allocation, the same way retail is and the restaurant is. And so if residential requires a total of three outdoor parking spaces, then somebody else, resident, the retail or the restaurant has to give up two spaces.
One space.
No, you've allocated one, one, one residential space is outdoors, one is in the garage, right?
No, in two, two spaces are outdoors, one is in the garage.
So you're, you're providing for three?
Correct.
Right. So you're, you're correct. And only one of the spaces allocated for retail or restaurant has to be subtracted from retail or restaurant. And it says retail is 317 square feet. It gets one space. So you can't make a zero. So that would require.
We have two spaces allocated for the retail.
I'm sorry, it's 175. It's two space. Right. So if you can't reduce your retail to 175 to get it down to one space, could you? That's up to you.
No.
The alternative is to, is to reallocate a space that you have previously attributed to the restaurant use and subtract three seats from the 32 proposed.
Great. So I have two responses to that. Number one is, there was the public act 2129, which says no zoning regulations shall require more than one space for each one bedroom unit. So there is a public act that said that.
Where, which regulation is that? Where is that?
It's a public act. It's the new enabling act that, that passed in August of, or in the 2021.
Oh, oh, this is.
You opted out of certain provisions.
This is the state statute you're referring to?
Correct. Correct.
All right.
Yeah, the ADU, the ADU Act, the one that required accessory dwelling units.
All right. So the question then is, are these ADUs?
No, it, it doesn't matter. It's a, it's a huge overarching statute. But the statute says no zoning regulations shall require more than one parking space for a one-bedroom unit. That's, that's what the new law is. So if you have a regulation that goes against that.
Right.
That, that doesn't no longer comply with the general statute.
So that was.
So that's number one. Number two, if we, to, to reach your calculation, which I don't disagree with, I've done all this, done all this math, we would lose two spaces, two, excuse me, two seats in the restaurant.
Two seats.
Dropping it down to 30, and then we could comply.
Okay.
With your regulations and. So it's, this isn't a deal breaker, fortunately.
Well, so if you're only required by state statute to provide one parking space for each unit.
For one-bedroom unit.
Right. Yeah. And you have.
We have one, one space for the one-bedroom.
Right. And one and a half.
And two spaces.
It was a two bit.
We have two spaces, because we can't have a half a space.
Correct.
For the two-bedroom. So we comply with your regulations on the two-bedroom.
So in the public act that was passed, not 1029, which did, which didn't pass as, as originally proposed, is, is it correct?
That's what I'm looking up.
Yes.
2129.
It was a long one, remember it?
It was a long one. Then you opted out of some of the provisions of it.
Yes, we opted out of the ones we could.
Yeah.
That's what the question boils down to. Is that portion of the statute part which we chose to opt out of in order for us to apply our own ADU regulations, including parking requirement? Separate from the question of.
Yeah.
Our current definition of accessory dwelling units, does it capture these residential dwelling units in the business district? Or are our accessory dwelling units possible in this, in the B2 district?
Well, the dwelling units are existing.
Right. Yes. But you can't classify them as something that is allowed in a B2 district based on the premise that they're previously existing non-conform.
Right. But the issue, the statute goes beyond accessory dwelling units. It says in any development, you can't require more than one parking space for a one-bedroom unit.
Right. Now the question is, is that part of the statute subject to our having opted out?
I'm still scrolling.
Can't tell, huh?
It is.
The state is not exceptionally proficient at zoning.
No. Well, let's answer, let's answer your other questions or see if there's any other questions besides the park. Because as I said, it's a two-seat question. So we're not entirely. It's not a deal breaker.
All right. We got the floor plan. So we could see where the retail was and. Alright, we got the floor plan, so we could see where the retail was and. Outdoor dining. Twelve seats and two hundred and seventeen square feet provides. Eighteen square feet per seat is a six foot by three foot area. Comfortable for seating on a twelve. It's a. Two hundred seventeen square foot outdoor seating area. And if there is. Twelve seats out there is. There's no room for any for any more seats.
Hey, the architect shows that patio area here with three four tops for the twelve seats.
Right.
So it seems like it does fit, and you know, that area, that was just squared off. It's all upgrade, it doesn't count as coverage, we've. You know, we could expand that area. If maybe. But he felt that the three four top tables would fit comfortably there.
Alright, so we're we're being shown there are three tables with four seats each, right?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? I appreciate that the applicant agrees to install sidewalk across the site. On the Elm Street frontage. The location of the sidewalk. With regard to the existing, the previously existing nonconforming. Sign. Let's make sure that the sign. Doesn't have to move because of the sidewalk. If it does, it would require a new sign application. And then if it's moved, then it has to comply and be ten feet from the property line.
The sign is, this is Joe Rent for the record, the sign is just inside the property line, as you can see here, I blew it up a little bit. Generally, the sidewalks are in the right of way off of the private property. We have a pretty wide right of way here, you can see the edge of the road in the property line. So again, as I had mentioned before, under the sky wire and along here and across the driveway. Would be the sidewalk, so we we would not have to relocate the sign.
Okay. Alright, so anything else? No? This site had previously. Had had approvals that our staff discovered in the files. For online parking areas, showing. Parking space counts. Of twenty seventeen and eleven. And.
You. Twenty seventeen plus eleven?
No.
No. Completely different approvals over time. Eleven at one point and twenty at another and seventeen at another point. And this this one shows.
Sixteen.
A total of sixteen. I think the one that had the highest count had diagonal angle parking, let's say, across the face of the building. Which didn't exactly work well for cars backing out. Of a parking space to then, where do they turn around in order to exit going forward onto Elm Street, so.
Correct, yeah, we we have a standard twenty-four foot aisle with standard nine by eighteen perpendicular spaces and your. Standard eight by twenty-two parallel space, so everything meets the town standards for the parking. Slanted spaces would definitely not not work unless there was a a drive-through to the shopping center.
Right. Okay, so. Our zoning enforcement officer is investigating as to whether or not. The state statute regarding minimum parking requirements for. One and two, one and or two bedroom apartments. Is subject to our having opted out at the old Saber level. So we. Tabled this issue for.
I I do have one more question now that I'm looking at it. Where's the dumpster for the garbage?
In the gar- in the garage.
Yeah.
Oh, in the garage, okay.
Joe, do you want to explain it?
Uh, sh- uh, sure. Similar to the Essex restaurant that we did recently, the owner has elected to use rollaway trash barrels and no dumpster. There's currently a dumpster that sits in the corner with no enclosure here. And that note says that that dumpster will be removed. And I believe the statement of use, and there's probably a general note over here too, that talks about rollaway trash barrels.
Yes.
That will be stored stored in the garage until trash day.
Probably mobile trash. Similar size as the Essex restaurant, so. These are these are small. Restaurants, this is actually smaller, right, Joe?
It's the Essex has forty-two seats, this has thirty. The Essex has twenty outdoor seats and this has twelve.
Is it thirty or thirty-two? I just wanna.
Well. The printed materials we received. It says thirty-two, we're we're wait, we're waiting. Sorry, it's a, it's a, it's a valid, it's a good question. It's. I'll have to review. What what we opted out of. And what we, and what and what parts we may not have been able to opt out of.
Hey, Ed, is it possible? Just to go with thirty seats right now and then if if it's not opted out of, just to do a certificate zoning compliance change?
Yeah. We wouldn't, we wouldn't object to that, thirty seats complies either way. And if we can prove that, one, we don't, we only need one parking space, then come back in for three more seats, a few more seats. But we wouldn't, we wouldn't have an issue with that approval with thirty.
That's fair.
Chris, stop.
I hear the prints are going. Yeah, alright. Then. For condition, alright, I will make, this is a public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak in favor of or in favor of or opposed to this application? Now is your opportunity, anyone in the room, no, anyone online wish to speak in favor of or opposed to this application? Raise your hand online if, no, there's only two people, so. None appearing, then I will make a motion to close the public hearing. During the public hearing, still being open. The applicant applicant has consented to condition limiting the number of seats to thirty if we have. Not if we have opted out of the portion of the state statute. That limits parking requirements for one bedroom apartments to not more than one space. The. Alternative would be if we have not opted out of the state statute in that parking space regard. The applicants applied for thirty-two seats would be. Approved instead. Now in the record of the public hearing. I make a motion to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying, oh, second, Mark Delmonico. Second's a motion to close. All those in favor of the motion to close the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously, no extensions and none opposed. Alright, then. I will make a motion to approve the Curry Clean Application for Structural Exceptional Use. At ninety-three Elm Street, Bethesda Smith thirty-six lot ninety-one. With the. Following conditions. The applicant has consented. To install sidewalk across the site on the Elm Street side. The outdoor dining will consist of three tables of four seats each. That's shown. And that. The number of seats for the indoor. Restaurant. Will be set at thirty if the commission has indeed opted out of the. Part parking requirements of. State statute, what was the number?
Twenty-one twenty-nine.
Twenty-one dash twenty-nine. Wherein the parking requirement for a one bedroom is not more than one parking space. If indeed the commission has successfully opted out of. That. Statutory requirement for parking associated with the one bedroom. The the restaurant would have. Thirty, if we, thirty seats, right, got it. Thirty-two if we have. Not opted out, thirty if we have opted out. Clear? Alright. Anything else?
Agree to all the recommendations by the architect.
Yes. The applicant will. Apply with the recommendation from the ARB. And. I think that's it. Is there a second to the motion? Mark Delmonico second to motion. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion to approve as stated. Simplify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried five zero zero. Good to go.
Great, thank you.
Thank for raising the technical issue which eventually has to be answered.
And I read your opt-out and I'm still not sure, though.
Either way. Alright, Chris.
Yeah.
We decided to include in the motion. Thirty thirty seats if we have opted out and thirty-two seats if we have not opted out successfully of the statute.
Okay.
So either way, we voted and approved the application. And we'll do our further homework and know better next time around.
I was looking at, sorry, there's twenty-eight pages when you look at it on your phone. So yeah, no, I had a note right here and I printed it.
Next on the agenda, public hearings, a drive-through petition to amend the old typical zoning regulations. To section twelve point three. Drive-through windows as an accessory use for financial institutions, pharmacies, indoor restaurants. Other food and beverage establishments in section fifty-three. Temporary moratorium is sought on drive-through establishments from. Effective date through April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. The petitioner is the Old Sabre Zoning Commission. Alright. Commission has determined that. The regulations recently adopted January, back in January of twenty twenty-two. That expanded the possibility for drive-through windows to be located. In new places in the B four district especially. That. That we may have some unintended consequences of that. And in order to sort that out, that we would propose. The moratorium. After which we may change nothing, or after the moratorium, we we may decide to make changes. To the drive-through window regulations regarding pharmacies. Indoor restaurants or other food and beverage establishments and financial institutions as well. Alright, any any discussion? That captures where we are. Mr. Royston, we assume you're you're here as a. A member of the audience of the public hearing to have something to say about our proposed moratorium. Proceed, if you would.
Thank you. Phil Quinn. First of all, I particularly wanted to come to determine what were. The specific problems and unintended consequences. And. Cause I I think that whatever those are, they can be corrected by amendment to the regulation. So. The the moratorium itself, I'll just get to that. I have a request. On behalf of. Max's place, El Olso. That you. Reduce the period of time for consideration. The reason being is, human nature is that if you have six months, you tend to take six months. It would seem that. What amendments. You may wish to make. Could be done within that, within that period, but assume. The moratorium is to essentially. Put a hole until you have the opportunity to do whatever you think is best. So our request is that we do that. In a shorter time span, hopefully. About a month at the end. About a month on the effective date. I want to say for the record, I am not representing Big Y. At this particular instance, mainly because. I didn't have an opportunity to consult with them as to. What they might want to state to the. You do know in the preliminary plan that they had presented early on. As part of the change in regulations. They did have a proposal for. They literally called the seats for. Big Y expressed that being explored and an adjacent. Tenant, this tenant. Which had a. So. Sure they're going to be interested in what you do. And I do know that they certainly, through their engineers. F H Esca. De Zayas, that firm. Would be happy to work with the commission. And solving. What are the problems? That's it, thank you.
So is. Just ask, if if you had in mind the specific time length other than six months.
Four months.
Four months, which would be. March. Instead of. Well, actually, February.
So you need to that time to.
Pardon me?
Draft your regulation, if there's a change. Those who refer with the thirty-five days.
Right, so we we have at this point, one, one, one meeting in November, two in December. Then we'd have two in February and and two in March. That's five, five meetings, right? And it it, so for the commission to consider. During that moratorium time period, would we have enough time to hash out? What it is that we intend for the regulations to accomplish? And what it is that we might have concerns about to thereby modify the regulations? And draft the new regulation, advertise the new regulation and have an effective date. Coinciding with the end of the moratorium period.
I would think that. A reduction to four months is a little tight. Particularly given that we're mid-November heading into the end of the year. We don't know what our needs will be, there is a possibility that one of them could be. Cancelled, that would compress it, so compromise of five months. Seems reasonable.
That would, that would give us two, four, six, eight, nine, nine, eight, nine meetings, and that that first one counted is would be. The second one in November, the twenty, the twenty-first. Right, so. That. That's not as tight.
The four, I think is. Too tight that would necessarily result in the ability. To adequately assess and determine what would need to be done. Or not done.
What is our schedule?
Does that sound feasible to staff? Staff has to carry a burden here.
I was talking to Attorney Royston today, I know that, I was at your last meeting, the six months. Date was brought up, I mean, I don't think the commission typically intends to keep something on the agenda. the commission typically intends to keep something on the agenda for six months or more. I just think it was just a cushion because of the, the what if, that's what I'm assuming that date was. I know your next meeting is pretty packed, you do have some other applications coming in, but I mean, I really can't predict the future as far as what's, you know, what's coming in. And we need, you know, to figure out what you're looking for and the discussions on the drive-through before we can even start writing text because I need your guidance, you know what I'm saying? To see where we're going this as we get into discussion.
So it's possible that we may not even be able to put it on an agenda until December to lay out the discussion as to what
So if you had text right now.
Might be necessary, so that's a month out from now already.
If you had text right now, we have referrals that we have to send thirty-five days in advance of the public hearing.
Correct.
So that would put us through the, the end of December already and we don't even have text on, on the tape.
Right, but I would think it was the, the intended person, uh, the, the intended uh, means of the commission is to address it early rather than late.
Yes.
It's in, it's in everybody's best interest to do that. So, you know, as soon as we can put it on, we can do it, if we finished it in three months, we finish it in three months, we don't have to necessarily say, okay, we'll wait until the five months is up and do it, do it then, so. Um, I think it's something that is, not having been at the January um, meeting myself, the one that I missed, I didn't get to participate in that or, or vote on that, so I need to take the time to look back adequately to, and then look at what the impact would be or not be based on, on what, what potentially it will mean, so I think, I think of a five-month period is, or less is, is adequate.
Consider that once, i- if any changes are to be made, that the legal draft would then have to be completed and submitted to a referring uh, agencies that we typically interact with. They have thirty-five days to reply. And so that
We have to send it to them thirty-five days before the public hearing. And sometimes they ask for extension. So you know, that, that's the whole thing, are we putting? I don't know how the April twentieth day, the six months, are you putting too much of a time crunch on yourself? That you could just go through and make a goal and keep that date and try to get it done in four months.
Yeah, that thirty-five days doesn't, doesn't belong to us in terms of what we can be doing.
I mean, I think you can do it faster, but you're putting a crunch on, on yourselves.
So am, am I correct in my, in my assumption that you feel six months is adequate? Should be maintained?
That was the number, as I said, I wasn't at the meeting, but you figure if you had text today, you're looking at a hearing in thirty-five days, so it would, and I'm not, you know, really sure where, how we're gonna go through the workshops and what exactly during those discussions will entail and what you need, I, I know the commission typically tries to move business along and workshops along, which I think you can do. So the last time we had the moratorium, it was at least six months, right? For cannabis.
That was a year, I think, yeah. Totally different. And that's why I think
It gives you an idea of how long it took us to
Right.
What we wanted to do.
But, and I think that's why we looked at six months being reasonable.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of or, or in opposition to the proposed moratorium for as as, as, as originally proposed for six months? Yes, Mr. Royston?
Six months is, is fine because uh, I'm relying on uh, the good faith of uh, Chris's uh, ability in workshops, that it, it will be uh, able to be done, so six months is fine.
So just to give you an idea, the cannabis moratorium was from October of twenty-one to May of twenty-two, so that was seven months. A little more difficult topic. Exactly, I'm a shirt from scratch.
No other comments from anyone in attendance, online or in person? I will make a motion to close the public hearing regarding the drive-through petition to amend the Old Tiberic zoning regulations to establish a six-month moratorium from effective date until April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a second to the motion to close the public here? Mark Delmonico, second to motion. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion to close the public hearing signify by saying aye. Aye, aye, motion carries unanimously. Any discussion? We received a plenty of referrals regarding the moratorium and no one raised any objections. Among those referrals, we have a list to
You have the adjacent municipalities you have.
Received from staff that we had
I believe harbor. Let me just grab the Sorry, I should have said, I really grabbed that.
neighboring town. Old Line, Eric Knapp. I saw it on Harbor Management Minutes.
Harbor Management, um, planning commission. Westbrook. Old Line. Essex. I think we've heard from everyone.
That was it? Alright. Alright, I will, let's get our check with all the referrals that were received. I will make a motion to approve the zoning commission application to, for the petition to amend the Old Tiberic zoning regulations for a moratorium. Uh, in section twelve point oh. Doc, this section has been adopted to provide the commission with the time necessary to consider adoption of potential changes to the zoning regulations pursuant to section eight dash two of the Connecticut general statutes. Section twelve point three, drive-through windows as an accessory use for financial institutions, pharmacies, indoor restaurants, or other food and beverage establishments, as described in section fifty-three. This temporary and limited term moratorium has been adopted to provide the Old Tiberic zoning commission with the time necessary to review existing regulations. Twelve point three, part A, applicability. During this temporary moratorium, drive-through windows as an accessory use for financial institutions, pharmacies, indoor restaurants, or other food and beverage establishments shall be prohibited in the town of Old Tiberic and any application shall be denied by the zoning commission or zoning enforcement officer to establish a drive-through window or windows as an accessory use for financial institutions, pharmacies, indoor restaurants, or other food and beverage establishments. The term in part B of twelve point three, but this temporary and limited moratorium shall remain in effect until April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a second to the motion to adopt this text? Mark Delmonico, second to motion. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion to amend the zoning regulations, adopting the text to establish a moratorium on drive-through windows until April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none, motion carries unanimously.
An effective date?
Effective date of the, of the moratorium, what's the, we have to advertise? And the effective date can be
November eleven. November eleven?
November eleven, effective November eleven. I'll make a motion. I make a motion to set the effective date for the moratorium on drive-through windows as November eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Second. Mark Delmonico, second to motion. All in favor of the motion to set the effective date as November eleventh signify by saying aye. Aye, aye, motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is committee representative and staff reports.
Okay. So we have interesting question from an applicant today who came in and wants an accessory structure made of a cargo container. So there's a new trend where people are taking cargo containers and retrofitting and like cutting them apart. And
Turning into living condition, yeah.
Not even sheds or like outdoor seating area with windows and she sheds, he sheds, things like that, so the, the question came to my mind, well, we have technically, is it a trailer? But if it's a permanent trailer and it gets retrofitted, it is permitted as an accessory structure.
What's the primary?
The resonance. Just
When there's a trailer, does it have wheels?
No.
No.
And the applicant wants to put it in a location, said if I ever want to move it, I just pull it right out of the driveway if I'm done with this project, he wants to make it fancy and
So is it kind of like one of those pods, like when you've moved, is that what I'm picturing?
It's like a tractor trailer.
It's like what you see in a cargo ship.
Cargo ship, it's the containers that are used for ocean shipping. So he wants to put it in his driveway and use it.
He's gonna put it in the yard, it'll meet the setbacks, it'll need coverage.
Because it's not a trailer, it doesn't have to be behind the flame.
Well, this is kind of where we're getting into this
Yeah.
Right.
But we have extensive definition of trailers. It either does or it doesn't.
We have one for containers.
Yeah.
It is a trend.
Like here.
Well, there's a number of containers around town, I mean, there's one right across the street on the right side of
Temporary though.
But this, this is a shipping container that was made into the house.
Whole idea, but He wants it like all over town. He wants to perfect living space is what he said.
Well, I was gonna say, if it's acceptable to the building code and the fire marshal, is it accessory dwelling unit?
Wouldn't, wouldn't have plumbing, it wouldn't have it, it wouldn't be an accessory dwelling unit, but someone could come in, so I guess the question is if someone comes in and, and other than the circumstance and they said, I'm gonna take a shipping container and make an accessory dwelling unit and they're putting windows in them, they're putting sheds, they make restaurants out of them. How do I really differentiate?
It's a detached bedroom.
No, I'm not talking about bedroom, I'm talking about the structure, so say, say I was to purchase a shipping container and put it in my yard and put windows in it and put doors in it and make it into a shed, I'm not even talking about a bathroom or a shed. What's different between the container and a shed? If it's a house, what's different between the house and the container? Because now you're retrofitting something, you know, it's a difference between something that's wood framed and a shipping container, and what if someone made an ADU completely out of metal? It just, it was, it's the materials.
Have habitable space, how does that fit in, does it?
Well, at this point, the discussion is, can I take this shipping container and retrofit it, make it so it doesn't look like a shipping container? But I don't have all the details, I don't have an application.
Technically, we don't regulate aesthetics except through the ARB.
But I guess the question is, you know, depending on how the application comes in, if it's an application that says I want living space and I want a bathroom and I want a bedroom, then it's an ADU. So putting together that we have a whole section on trailers and storage units, when do you differentiate? When you have a cargo container that all of a sudden gets retrofitted into whatever it is? So when, when is it no longer, you know, a, a trailer or I mean, I think it, it could, I mean, uh, but, but that's, it's just something that just, just gonna put on the radar.
Hypothetical, we, we regulate trailers and where they would go on a lot. If you have a boat and you deliver it to your lot on a trailer and you put it on poppets, those are those pads on sticks that hold up boats, and you take the trailer away, is the boat subject to setbacks and location regulations?
Well, it has to be screened under trailers.
Why, there's no trailer. The trailer went away.
Well, I mean
Same thing, right?
Well, this
One shaped like a boat, one shaped like a box.
Right.
Right, so how, how would we, how would we deal with that?
Isn't one, wasn't one boat is temporary?
Maybe.
I, I know, it's very great.
Right. So if, if it arrives on a trailer and, and stays put, that's, that's what we're talking about.
I mean, realistically, someone could come in and say, I'm gonna take a series of shipping containers and put it on a vacant lot and make it into a house.
Yeah.
The building
It meets the building codes and it's allowed.
So we can't discriminate against mobile homes.
No, we can't discriminate.
They might arrive on a trailer, a prefab house would arrive on a trailer. How, how is it that we can
Unless we outright ban container.
Well, we, the other thing is when
It's just something that came up that, I mean, I, I kind of tend to lean towards if it meets all the setbacks as an accessory structure and it's retrofitted and it meets the building code, whether it's used as a shed, a primary house.
Well, I It's outside of zoning, but the, the question for the building inspector is then, is it somewhat, is it somehow habitable? And the zoning, which are regulated in terms of a storage container versus habitable space? That's a distinction that we've already made.
So it's, I mean, it's tricky now because a lot of these accessory structures that are coming through have mini bars, they have electricity, they become little party houses or pool cabanas. So it's a matter of trying to screen them when they come in, someone says, I'm building a, a ten by twenty accessory structure, it's trying to get the information, are you having plumbing, are you having electrical, does it have a kitchen, does it have you know, when do you get to that threshold? Because it's become common, I mean, people exercise in their garage or, or their shed, it's not just
Yeah.
Yard tools and your, your
Wow, it's the full spectrum of people wanting to conduct activities or whatever indoors. And to what extent does zoning regulate it in concert with the building department? If you put in plumbing, water, shower, toilet, sink, um, where, and then you put in a refrigerator because you have a mini fridge and you put in a microwave, when does it become something other than, than the box?
Well, at that point, it becomes a living. It becomes a dwelling.
Well, it kind of
If you put in water, it has to connect to the step.
Yeah.
Alright.
But people have garages with toilets and water, they have huge farms in their backyard that
But they'd have to, they'd have to comply with all building and health codes.
So typically, if something comes in and it's a little bit larger, it's having plumbing and electrical and you know, also with the health code, it gets reviewed as far as having area for bed. And you know, also with the health code, it gets reviewed as far as having area for bedrooms. Typically, what I try to do is have the owner file an affidavit saying something that, you know. Yes, I have, I've converted my two-car garage. Into exercise and storage space and I've sheet rocked it and I finished it and I have electricity and, and maybe water. However, it's not approved as an apartment, it's not approved as bedrooms, it's not approved before I sign off on the certificate, just to kind of cover us, which has helped. But, but it's, it's a different world now with. You know, these regulations, when it said storage container, when they were written, they're thinking people are gonna have giant cargo containers in their backyard. You know, to put tools in, and now they're becoming fun, new little accessory structure or homes.
Yeah. And they, and they would still comply with gross floor area on the lot, coverage on the lot, setbacks. Wow.
I mean, people have three acre lots, I mean, they have room to, to do this stuff with.
Do we have, we. We, I, we have in our accessory dwelling unit regulations that the ADU can't be closer to the street than the. Then, then, than the primary dwelling on the lot. Is there a way to, to use that as a model for? Accessory, can, right now, how can accessory buildings, structures? Be located closer to the street than the, than, than the primary structure on the lot?
So typically, it would have to, well, depending on. Accessory and primary, so accessory structure in most resident, you know, residents districts is four hundred square feet. Which four hundred square feet is really a tight two-car. Garage with no loft.
Right.
So it then becomes, you've got. The ten-foot setback, and I'm just kind of in, most of the districts that are smaller goes to a fifteen, when you go to a five hundred and seventy-six. Square foot standard twenty-four by twenty-four garage. So, I mean, most people aren't gonna put their garage in the front of the house, but there are circumstances, especially when people are on a corner lot.
Yeah, if you put the garage.
They, they kind of have to have it in some location.
Put the garage close to the street and the ADU above the garage, now the ADU is closer to the street.
Or in beach communities, and I'm not even gonna get into the non-conforming lot size where houses are on the water, people drive from the road. Because they're not coming from the beach, say Plumbank Road, there's a lot of. Garages that before house elevation, they're on the street side because that's the only way you can access them by a car, you can't get around those houses. I mean, now that's going away, now that. What is making people elevate the homes to go in? Wow, I mean, I, I don't think it's a.
Well, your typical containers, eight by forty.
He wants a, he wants an eight by twenty.
That's a half container, well.
But I mean, the, the discussion isn't about just the guy that called, it's general.
Yeah, the portable on-demand storage, they come in a whole variety of sizes.
Well, typical shipping container is eight by, is eight by forty, some are, some are forty-five.
Yeah.
Some are even fifty-three. But they're only eight feet on the inside dimension, so it's about nine feet on the outside. So if you're gonna get any kind of structure, you have to have two of them side by side.
Yeah.
Two of them, then you're over the five hundred. But.
I mean.
I, I, you know, I think it, it turns, I mean, if they meet all the codes.
I'm just kind of throwing this trend out there.
Stop it, yeah.
Somebody could tear down their.
Well, may not be practical for my taste, but that's, you can't regulate taste.
But so, say if someone wanted to build a seasonal home for hoppers out of cargo containers. I, I mean, I'm just kind of throwing it out, you know, just kind of started thinking about.
Well, if you've got a house and you have a whole bunch of people coming to the house and you need more space, you have a detached bedroom. Somebody goes there to sleep, and they come into the house and they use the facilities.
Or they become rental property, huh? Or they become rental property.
Well, yeah.
And just something I think about, I mean, I think. Really can't regulate.
No.
What it's made of, but. But there's, I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, if you Google it and look at the options, there's a lot of really neat.
Do you still have the photo of the stacked shipping containers?
It's, I actually, I have it in a file somewhere, but I can send it to you.
Oh, that, as they storm.
No, they have, there's.
It was sort of a humorous thing that came out of, of a state. South of Ohio somewhere that had.
Or actually, they were motor homes. So I forget, I was going back and forth, it might have been John Bennett years ago, and he came in the office and he says, this is what I'm proposing, and it had. You know, a number of trailers on the ground and then other ones on top of them, and then they put stairways between all these mobile homes.
Well, same thing would happen with shipping container, yeah.
So anyway. I just thought it kind of. I mean, things are changing, people are spending a lot more time in their backyards, I don't know, maybe COVID made everybody. In outdoor kitchens and.
If you pass a boat on a trailer, properly stored in a yard alongside your garage. Far enough away from the street, but there's an extension cord running through the boat.
Well, that was to charge the batteries.
Right, yes, right. So. That's why I thought of a boat, it's not on a trailer. Somebody could be living in the boat.
They could make a restaurant out of it.
And they use those on the waterfront in London, yeah, they got a whole income.
It's just kind of a creative way to think about it. So your next meeting.
Twenty first.
Um, you have a preliminary discussion of attorney. Station tests. Preliminary discussion on Ninety-one Sheffield Street with. Options, a CAM application. Architecture review board, sign application, I think it's gonna be kind of a long. Night, I wanted to get something, I mean, we start, we need to start talking about. What you think you need as we go into this moratorium. And, and you know, to go through the one thing that I thought of, and I had mentioned it to Bob. Is that when we had Mike Galanti look at parking analysis. Um, for fine federal, I mean, maybe it would be something to have him look at drive-through analysis. I, I'm just, I'm just saying an onsite circulation for.
Drive-throughs. That article that you sent us in the past week, that was very interesting. How you can change the dynamics of this, that one.
So I, I'm thinking, yeah, we need some additional input other than. So I, I think the.
Yeah, I, I'd like to see that, I'd like some help on that.
So do you think that that would be a good idea to, I, I don't think it's gonna.
I think we need to look at. I don't wanna say examples, but concepts of what it could look like in town. And I'm not saying drawings or any of that kind of stuff, but what section of town? Could be greatly impacted by multiple drive-ins and what would be the ramifications or not ramifications? Of that type of development.
Well, I think we're looking at, oh, I mean, the auto mall area. Mariners Way. But it, it's.
But I'm also saying like a, like, like a, a pencil drawing of the concept. So one thing to say, the mall area, but then if you looked at the car mall area and you say there's six of them side by side. What's that gonna do to that? Part of town.
So it's a difference between side by side and all on one lot. Nothing, yeah.
But what, what does that do to that area of town?
Well, curb cuts.
Well, yeah, but I mean, I'm talking about traffic flow, all, all the, all the rest of it.
So, so what if we just started with what we have? For, for regulations and maybe have. Our traffic engineer take a look, I know, and we spent a lot of time on the Dunkin' Agway. Obviously, in the peak of COVID, when people couldn't walk into restaurants, they were, there was cars lined up on the Boston Post Road. They, you know, to see if we have enough stacking, and if you do go to the DePongy Agway, Smithland, a lot of times. There's, you can't, it impacts the circulation, maybe there's some. And also Jeff Jacobson, I mean, that may be a start just to kind of talk a little bit and get us thinking about onsite as well as.
Right.
You know, overall where, you know, those locations are.
CVS has approval for a twenty-four hour drive-through pharmacy, drive-through window. Banks have drive-through windows, which are essentially ATMs. In some cases, can you, I don't know, but can you make a deposit or something at a drive-through window at, at, at a bank?
Yeah.
Twenty-four hours a day. Okay, so now let's think about, does that also apply to a restaurant? Can the drive-through window be open while the restaurant is closed?
It happened during COVID.
You can't, right, yeah.
And, and we did get an application that was received today. For multiple drive-throughs on a lot, I mean, I think it's a matter of, you know. Is that okay? Maybe it's totally fine. And have five drive-throughs on a lot. Maybe, you know, we, we talked about at one point in the previous change, you know, do you need to have a traffic light there? I know with. You get to the betting site, and, and there's different sites where you can go through and then you kind of, you keep that all on the property, what happens when you can't take it all on the property? So I guess I'm just looking for guidance.
Kind of budding properties that have multiple drive-throughs. What does that do to the traffic on a state road that we have no control over?
And near residential area, I'm just.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, at one point, there, George Bissoni years ago was trying to get a, a Dunkin' Donuts right when you get on the route not. You know, and, and these are the things I think we need to kind of think about, I know we. Cut the B three out at this point, but it's really what is the commission and the town. Looking for, so maybe. Maybe I can get Jeff and Mike to get some input for us for December, maybe you can get me some thoughts, or we can just kind of at least start. You know, with some overall input. Because I don't, you know, I'm not really sure. Which direction we're going in, but I think. The commission's at a point where. You know, do you want a drive-through bank, a drive-through restaurant, a drive-through pharmacy, I mean.
Are our options to leave it the way it is?
Could do that too.
Amend it in some form or fashion, or go back to what it was.
East Line was contemplating a minimum separation distance. For drive-through windows, I don't know if they adopted anything. How would one, we have to go to every town individually and look at their regulations to see. If they have any kind of restrictions on drive-throughs. Is there, is there a bigger database that would?
Well, and, and that's kind of what I'm thinking with our traffic engineer and Jeff, is that Mike Galanti. Does traffic analysis in Manhattan. You know, and, and all over, you know, I mean, there's, and Jeff reviews this in other towns too, and, and maybe. We kind of think about in the next week or so, just to kind of give me a list. And to go, I mean, I can get you traffic and drive-through regulations for every town in Connecticut, but the reality is what. What is Old Saver looking for and, and what are those thoughts?
Traffic is significant, people respond to traffic, and yet traffic is not a. What sole reason for a denial, it won't survive an appeal. So traffic is a consideration and it's important. But I would say that for Old Saver with our massive pedestrian node. That pedestrians should be equally important as traffic. And rather than focus on, it's gonna take me thirty seconds longer to go from one end of town to the other because of all these drive-through windows. Focus more on the safety of pedestrians in the pedestrian node crossing all these driveways. That are there in order to serve cars, because if you have one driveway to a parking lot where there's a restaurant. You're done, but if you have to have two driveways, because there's a drive-through window, that increases the danger to pedestrians.
Well, I mean, I think the other thing the commission needs to think about is we're moving. More towards walkability and transit-oriented development and avoiding. Cars are getting to a point where we're not so dependent on it. And, and here, you know, here we are with a lot of motor vehicle uses, which. Is contrary to some of the things, we're putting in sidewalks and pedestrian nodes for people to walk. But there'll be drive-throughs, you know, and, and it could be fine too, but it's just. Maybe, I mean, I could put together.
There's a. There's a web, it's more like a blog, anyway, it's called Strong Towns, I think it's dot org. Anyway, they're really big at advocating to designing streets for people, rather than just get, get the maximum number of cars. Through at the highest velocity. And so I'll, I'll see what I can find from, from that angle too. Uh, look at pedestrian safety in the pedestrian node where we have sidewalks, which has been deemed the desirable. Use of, use of the space. Relative to getting more cars through the place, because you end up with wider streets. Nobody likes to cross five lanes of traffic. I mean, to cross the street from Madison Coffee Roasters to Chuck E.'s, that's not a fun street to cross. Unfortunately.
So as Attorney Royston said, you know, that he could have Dave Ziyaks, who's the engineer. For Max's place come in and talk about it, I, I mean, I think maybe.
I'd rather see our, have our experts.
And have Mike come in and talk about onsite parking and circulation, as well as how drive-throughs impact it, maybe have them both take a look at our regulations. So do we want to start with putting together, like a list of, or I could try to put together. Some questions, or you can email me concerns, I could reach out to them, I don't think they're gonna be able to get me anything in a week. But start the discussions, our first meeting. I, I'll put it on the next agenda if we have enough time, but I have a feeling we probably won't, and try to do it for the first meeting. In December, and then maybe get some feedback on. And I mean, if you just email it to me what the concerns are. And at least we can just kind of start brain dumping, and I could see if. Um, Jeff and Mike maybe could even come to the meeting. To talk about this.
Does Matt Willis have any? Experience working with other towns?
He does, but he's gonna defer, I mean, as far as, I think we just need to get to the point where we. Know what you would want to change and then go from there, I mean, I can get you easily examples of drive-through regulations from. Multiple towns, it's just what, what do you.
What do you, what do we want?
And I don't think we're there yet, so.
What, you, you said we had on your next agenda something regarding gas station?
Attorney Royston's coming in with a preliminary discussion on gas stations.
I saw we were in a.
Yeah.
Fuel process there, so.
Matt, Matt Willis, this is a new application.
Okay.
So I just think there's gonna be a lot of discussion on the next one to start, so if I can do some background work and get something to it, then we can.
Anybody know about the mobile station by Mystic Market, the one that's all boarded up?
We didn't, I didn't hear anything directly, but I did hear. That there's a number of, of the mobile in Clinton's also boarded up, and they're changing out the gas tanks.
Rumor was that they were changed, they had to replace the, the tanks. But I don't know if that's.
I believe, yeah, well, that's what I'm hearing.
Well, it looks, it looks like blight right now.
But in Clinton, the one, um, same thing at that mobile too, so I wonder if it's in a girl, and maybe they just board them up so that it's. People aren't tempted to try to drive in there to go to the.
But I don't see, I don't see the property is under any kind of deep order. To stop, to cease and desist because of leaking gas tank.
Well, there's mandatory replacement. So when they get to a certain age, you have to pull them and replace them or whatever.
Typically, that always happens in relatively short periods, but I, I haven't heard anything.
And just in case you care, we have no, um. Thirteen thirty-three Boston Post Road, the former. Thirteen thirty-three Boston Post Road, the former Tequila's and Cottage Whimzy.
Was gone.
And that's gone. We have no plans for that.
Other, there are no plans for that?
Samurai. They, they are working. At the last I knew, they were getting a survey to come in. So we have no plans for that. The.
Motel across the street's gone.
Yeah.
No plans for that.
The motel got knocked down.
Yeah, that's gone, right.
And, um, there. What's there? Cottage, Cottage Whimzy. That building, half the building's gone, right?
Yeah.
What about the, the rest?
Oh, it's, it's all going.
It's all going.
Oh, it's all.
Just a slow demolition process.
Yeah.
I feel like the diner over there.
Seventy forty-five?
Yeah, yeah. They're just moving slow.
Slow, yeah, like everything else.
I heard he's having a hard time getting equipment like others.
I'm sure there's.
Well, there's a lot of.
Yeah.
The Japanese restaurant on Main Street. Figured out how to comply with the minimum window. Requirements in the B one district where they get a variance, because. One, one side of the door has all glass and the other side is all.
Because it, I forget what they, if they put. Angles. Wood, there was something that we went through at Architectural Review that the light could somehow go in.
Okay, so it still has a window, you just don't see it prominently.
Trying to hide. The window, something.
Yeah. Forbes magazine had an article saying about how fine dining has come to Old Sabre, talking about the Essex restaurant. And it's like, at the same time, the Econo- Economic Development Commission is promoting a raffle to win. Gift certificates to forty-two restaurants in Old Sabre. And it's like Forbes has just got their head in a strange place because. We have forty-two restaurants and it's like, that's the only one that.
Well, there was a New York Times or another one. They mentioned Main Street, Old Sabre, the place to be. And it was the Essex. And, um. Gargano, but then it was like, well.
Yeah.
What about libs? What about Penny Lane? It was kind of like, he was just like, oh.
Well, it's all, it's all advertising. That's what drives it. But, anything else? Dirty Lewis were here, were here, she. Hold him, I'm, Mark Delmonico, second to most. All those in favor? All right. Motion carries unanimously, so yeah, good night.